All this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May 29, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call a roll, please.
Counselor McCormick. Absent, deceiving, and excused. Counselor Camardo.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy will be here. And Counselor Resica.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Counsel, just so you know, Resolution Number 99 has been pulled for this evening. Counselor Cuddy is present. We will start out with our public to be heard. So clerk, if you read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder, in pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the City Council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Please, either podium, if you would.
Mayor Quill, members of the council, councilmen, white. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we need you to just state your name and your address for the record.
Okay. My name is Lucy Caishati, and I live at Boyle Center. Okay? All right. All right, Auburn, let's stand up and be counted. I'm serious. We have a wonderful opportunity coming to this city. We have a fantastic speaker, whose name is Matthew Kelly, and he says, "Living every day with passion and a purpose." And every person here has the same things, feelings that I do. We want to do what's best for our city. And this is what all of us, regardless of what party you belong to, that's what we feel. Now, this gentleman, we have the wonderful opportunity, which I don't want us to miss. I'd like to welcome him, because he's a renowned author, lecturer, and his name is Matthew Kelly, who has spoken in over 50 countries. It's an Auburn miracle. He picked us, over all these cities, to come here. What an honor. We should be grateful that somebody of his ability and talents is willing to spend his time with us. This is, he's not an ordinary inspirational speaker, but someone who believes, as we do, in doing good for others with their best interests at heart. How refreshing that is, to find somebody who wants to do something for somebody and not want anything in return. Is that wonderful or not? I think the guy is fabulous. Well, you can get, you can go there, Auburn High School, this Saturday night, at 6:30 to 9:30, with 20-minute intervals. So if you want to get up and walk around, you can. And for less than the cost of the dinner, you will get an inspirational message that will last you a lifetime. I love it. He's living every day with passion and purpose. Remember the date. Oh, also, by the way, I don't know what happened, I came up with this crazy idea, we're offering free rides, it's going to come in the paper, I think, tomorrow, and now I'm saying, dear God, please make, we have enough volunteers to drive people up to the college if they can't go at night. Anyway, so, come to that, I have his number here to call, my number, Pat Cleaver, who called me to help her, was last Sunday or something, and I've been trying to put out feelers all over the city, because I think we have a tremendous opportunity, and it behooves us to get everybody out to go and to support this gentleman. I thank you. Let's stand up and be counted, Auburn, because it'll be an Auburn miracle. And I think she just told me, we've got over 600 people. I hear the college holds 935, not the college, the high school, is that right? 935. I would love to have an overflow crowd. I would love to have everybody come out, the whole city of Auburn. Can we do it? I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Lucy.
God bless you. And call me, my number is 2533-115. If you want tickets, we will have them ready for you at the door. No matter what you want, we'll do it. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.[344.03][344.03](Laughter)[345.03][345.03](Applause) Lucy, don't get a chance at rebuttal, but if he has half the enthusiasm you do, it'll be a wonderful evening, so. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? No one else? Norman, Ron, they're quiet tonight, so we'll move along on to the approval of meeting minutes from May 22, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, second by Counselor Cuddy. Discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Approval of meeting minutes for May 22, 2014. Counselor McCormick, Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Resica.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Hi.
Carrie.
And to Christina, we're going to move along to the National Historic Preservation Month and Historic Preservation Awards Program presentation. Christina Salvick, is Christina here somewhere? There she is. Are you going to leave off Christina, or how are we going to do this? We should be glad to.
Proclamation from the office of Mayor Michael D. Quill. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people, and whereas New Age of Preservation, Embark, Inspire, and Engage, is the theme for the National Preservation Month of 2014, and is meant to excite your current supporters and introduce new audiences to the work you're doing to enrich and preserve the places that make your community special. The theme is cosponsored by the Historic Resources Review Board and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, hereby proclaims May 2014 as National Preservation Month, and call upon the people of the City of Auburn to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Receiving the award is Michael Demming. Mike, I know you're here somewhere, if you'd meet me at the podium, please.
I thought they were going to give the awards, give me a few thoughts, but I jumped the gun. Preservation's been going on for a long time, for our, out the history of this whole country. You know, it started very young, now some of the things are matured, such as we are. A lot of the awards we're going to give tonight are for some bigger projects, and they were with some government support, such as the houses on Orchard Street, and when they give them out, you'll understand. With this slow economy, you can see building permits issued in the city, it's still at a slower pace. Years back, on South Street, people were investing, sometimes hundreds of thousands at one time. It hasn't come to a stop, but it's slowed down a little bit, the budget is tight, everybody deals with that. But these individuals are the people in our community that make the difference, whether it's your home, you know, most of our city is built before World War II, and even the things built from the '50s, '60s are into the renovation stages. So it's individuals, and bringing people into our community, a lot of the people doing these projects come outside, we have some great bargains here in the city of Auburn. And it's a, when I have relatives come, I moved here from New Jersey, and you look in the newspaper, the price of houses and stuff, and what's here, this is a beautiful place to live, and that's why we're recognizing people tonight, because they are the ones that uplift it, make it a beautiful place, and we thank everybody for their participation.
Thank you. Christina?[626.16][626.16](Coughing)
Sorry, Christina. Sit down.[629.16][629.16](Coughing)
On behalf of the City of Auburn Historic Resources Review Board, I would like to thank you for recognizing this month, May, is National Historic Preservation Month, and for your continuous support of Historic Resources Review Board's local preservation recognition program, which is why we're here this evening. Since 2001, the City of Auburn has been designated as Certified Local Government. This is a joint program between the National Park Service and State Historic Preservation Office that focuses on promoting historic preservation at the grassroots level. For the 2012-13 federal reporting year, the City of Auburn Historic Resources Review Board held five meetings, reviewing and approving 11 applications for certificates of appropriateness related to improvements, repairs, demolition, and reconstruction of existing and exterior features of properties within the South Street and Grover Street Historic District. In 2013, the National Park Service and the State Park Service have reworked their historic tax credit program to further encourage economic development and job growth in the construction-related industries. The city currently has both residential and commercial property owners that are utilizing these incentive programs. As stated previously, the focus of tonight is about community recognition for National Historic Preservation Month, and this year's theme is chosen by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, New Age of Preservation, Embark, Inspire, and Engage. This year's preservation theme is meant to encourage excitement of existing preservation supporters, and introduce new audiences to the preservation work in Auburn that is already underway throughout many community and arts organizations, working diligently to enrich and preserve the places that make Auburn unique and special. Auburn has truly put the 2014 National Trust theme in motion. Over the years, the City of Auburn Historic Resources Review Board has recognized various local property owners and organizations that have completed historic preservation and rehabilitation projects that have received approval through the CVA process, as well as projects or properties that have been previously vacant, abandoned, or are now being utilized in a manner that would encourage neighborhood revitalization. And this year's 2014 nominated projects are as follows. Mr. Andrew T. Simkin, Award for Building Rehabilitation at Two South Street, which we commonly know as the Phoenix Building. This property, the Phoenix Building, is located at the corner of Genesee Street and was the former Auburn Savings Bank. Constructed circa 1871, this building is a locally distinctive example of Second Empire construction, is an important element of the Auburn downtown streetscape. In May 2012, Cuca Phoenix Properties LLC acquired the building and immediately fell in love with the property. The family set out to build on previously completed renovations by improving the building's corridors and common areas, as well as tenant-by-tenant space renovations. The before and after photos of the first-floor hallways and tenant spaces on the third floor truly demonstrate the Simkins' commitment to historic preservation and the proper treatment appropriate for the historic property. The photo that you see here was actually carpeted, and they had uncovered this beautiful mosaic that we believe actually exists throughout the whole building. So these are some of the things that the building owners are realizing as they're going through the renovation process and uncovering these beautiful historic components. This is interior hallway work that was recently done. The plaster work is just impeccable, the paint colors really bring out the trim work, it's all very nicely done and high-quality work. This is the first-floor lobby that was reworked to include a small meeting space, you know, available for rental, and Auburn Document Center is still there, they're just behind the partition. So Historic Resources Review Board would like to recognize and thank Mr. Simkin as the representative of the Cuca Phoenix Properties LLC for his commitment to local preservation, as well as his dedication and community service that he provides on a weekly basis. I had the personal pleasure of getting a tour up into the clock tower and realized that Mr. Simkin personally basically climbs up there on a weekly basis and winds the clock to make sure that we all can tell time here in Auburn. So, you know, this is no small feat, and to be managing that on his own is a really wonderful public service, so that was just wonderful to know, and I wanted to share that So thank you for your true dedication to keeping a historic feature in the Auburn I have one to add to the list. Walter Aikman was actually nominated for an Award for Landscape Preservation. So before we get on to St. Alphonsus, I just quickly wanted to say, he wasn't able to join us this evening for family reasons, but many of you that know Walt know his dedication and commitment to local urban forestry efforts, and his efforts to continue educating the public about invasive species and proper tree planting. So I just wanted to say a few words on Walt's behalf, and thank him for his commitment to our urban forestry and landscape preservation in the city of Auburn. So our third nominee this year was St. Alphonsus Parish, an Award for Project Excellence. They're located at 81 to 85 East Genesee Street for an outstanding rehabilitation of a religious property. The current St. Alphonsus Church edifice was built in 1930 and is a notable Romanesque church building within the Genesee Street neighborhood. This is the congregation's third building on the site. And as with all historic religious buildings, there is a constant need to protect them from the elements, and just normal wear and tear from building usage. This past year, the congregation initiated an ambitious capital project to renovate the altar and replace the aging roof and wood trim. As you can see from the photos, the altar area underwent complete renovation, with removal of the old carpet and install of new porcelain tile. Six columns were added to the sanctuary to match the rest of the church's architecture, and lighting and other safety features were also added. So this is the before. And this is the after picture. As you can see, the lighting and the additional architectural features really just add a lot of significance and integrity to the space. This was the carpeting previously. And the tile work that was done. Another before picture. And another after of the work. One of the most notable is the relocation of the original historic crucifix that is now suspended in the sanctuary. Actually, let me go back. So there's the before, and actually, you probably could see it right there now. However, one of the more clever features of this renovation is one that you cannot see. It's the usage of the existing sanctuary dome as a screen for presentations. This negated the install of a formal video screen, therefore preserving the integrity of the sanctuary. So the Historic Resources Review Board would like to recognize and thank Father Lou Vassil and congregation representatives Jill Del Strido and Adelaide Houston for their commitment to preserving our local religious structures. And our fourth nominee this year was an Award for Neighborhood Revitalization, it's Housing Visions Unlimited, Inc., for the SC Paint Cornerstone Project and Outstanding Rehabilitation of Residential Property. I think everyone knows this property in Auburn, 9 to 11 James Street. This building is circa 1880, was an abandoned, long abandoned, three-story Italianate residential building, which is now, thankfully, the current focus and highlight of the SC Paint Cornerstone Project, a mixed-jewels housing rehabilitation project undertaken by Housing Visions Unlimited, Inc. This large 5,300-square-foot residence has a prominent and historic presence on James Street. The residence, which originally constructed as a two-family home, two Horace J. Knapp on one side, and Serino E. Payne on the other. Payne, most notably, is known for his public service at the Cuca County level, but was later elected to the House of Representatives. Renovation of the historic residence began in 2012 and is completely revitalizing the building to include four affordable housing apartments at this point. So there's the before picture, and the after, and truly a change in the streetscape, a welcome change in the streetscape of James Street and Orchard Street. So as seen in the before and after photos, the rehabilitation project has taken great care to preserve the historic architecture while providing modern amenities for the Auburn families. And here's interior shot to give you an idea of the quality of the craftsmanship that has been used. The SC Paint Cornerstone Project is one of 16 buildings that are being renovated or newly constructed as part of the Orchard Street Neighborhood Revitalization Project. The Historic Resources Review Board would like to recognize and thank Ben Lockwood, I think he was here, as the representative for Housing Visions Unlimited, LLC, and for their commitment to preserving residential property in the Auburns' historic neighborhoods. And at this time, that concludes the presentation of the award nominees. So if I could ask the mayor, and if our chair of our board, Michael Demming, could come up to present the local preservation award to this year's nominees, and if one representative from each of the projects could come up to receive your certificate, that would be wonderful.
Want to thank the board and the city for this recognition, which means a great deal to my wife and myself. It's been a joy to be involved in this wonderful building, in this wonderful city, and we've worked very hard at it, and we've had a lot of help from friends and relatives and some very able contractors, and we're delighted to see that this historic building is continuing to be used, continuing to be visited, a lot of professional services being provided there, and we aim to continue to improve and maintain this wonderful building. And it's very meaningful for us to have this recognition and to see that others are supporting this project. Thank you very much.[1486.11][1486.11](Applause)
On behalf of the people of St. Alphonsus, we are absolutely delighted and privileged, really, I want to thank the Historic Resources Review Board, the City of Auburn, and Cindy, thank you very much. To all of you, thank you. Any project that is begun in a faith community is begun with the support of the people. It's done with able and competent craftsmen as well. The people who worked did it within three weeks. I don't know about you, but I think that's a miracle in itself, when you can get any project done in three weeks. Our roof hollow was a different story. Want to thank our architect, Adonori from Bear's Lee &amp; Bear's Lee, and our staff, who works side-by-side with him, Jill Del Strido, especially Adelaide Hudson. Those two people certainly, as well as our architect, made the project a reality.
I'd just like to, on behalf of the rest of our organization, Housing Visions, thank the City of Auburn and Historic Resources Commission for inviting us in and letting us tackle a big project here in the city. It was, it's always great, we're to do it, we're pretty much leased up, the last building is just coming in, and, you know, the best thing I can say is it's been a wonderful community from everyone we've dealt with, from the government perspective, from zoning, planning, codes, all the way down. We're excited to be here. We've actually been in Auburn for about 15 years. We're excited to add these buildings that we've done over on Orchard Street, and really be able to see the impact that we've been able to make in that neighborhood. And so we're very excited and very pleased, and we're going to be here for a long time. Thank you very much.[1633.41][1633.41](Applause)
I know some of you are not normally staying here for a long time. We have a great presentation coming up from Mr. James Best from the Auburn Civic Band, but if you have to be out of here, feel free, or leave whenever you're comfortable, so. Thank you, Father.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Best, could you make your way forward, please? Whatever podium you're comfortable at will work for us, so.
Good evening, Mayor Quill, Manager Salvick, and the counselors. I'm James Best, Sixth Florence Street, Auburn. I'm director of the Auburn Civic Band, an organization founded in 1910. And over the many years, this band has provided color and atmosphere to community events, and provided concerts in various nursing homes and senior citizen facilities, and served as a continuation of the typical high school band experience for our members. I'm here tonight to discuss the city's financial relationship with the Auburn Civic. My wife is passing out a couple documents there that maybe I can refer to if you have a question. Last year, the city and the band stumbled onto a system that proved out to be very successful. I am here to request the same format be used again this year. We would like the city to reimburse the Auburn Civic Band for expenses up to $1,500, and also provide the Showmobile at a cumulative value of up to $1,500. The practice, which makes a total of $3,000 maximum. The practice of subsidizing concerts at local nursing homes and senior citizen facilities reduces their financial burden, and also helps us with our band expenses, such as music purchases, equipment, insurance fees, storage fees, and construction costs. The Showmobile provides a professional lighted stage for us to perform on, and dramatically increases the visibility and overall sound quality. increases the visibility and overall sound quality of the band. And the two documents that my wife passed out, the one with the real small print on it is the actual agreement from last year. It was arrived at by Mr. Joe Hannig and Doug Selby, and it talks about the $3,000 and how it was split up into two segments, $1,500 for the Showmobile and $1,500 to help subsidize the concerts that we do at various nursing homes. That's really the document that outlines what we'd like to do again this year. And the other document is our schedule for this year, and there's 11 concerts on there. Two of them are already completed at the Boyle Center and Memorial Day. And then, we have Bluefield, Stryker, Schwartz, Mercy, Owosco Firehouse, Auburn Nursing Home and Mercy Rehab, and again, Owosco Firehouse, Figure Lake Center for the Living, and my phone number's there. The reason why three of those are highlighted in red are those are the three places that have requested the Showmobile for this year. So, that would be $750 of the $1,500, which is sort of spoken for, and the rest is up for grabs if anybody else wants to use the Showmobile up until we reach our limit, and then they're out of luck after that. So, if you have any questions, this is what I'm here for. And I want to thank the efforts of Michael Talbot and Douglas Selby for this agreement you've got here from last year, because they worked on it last year, and we would respectfully like and request it to be renewed again this year, the same format and the same everything, because it worked great.
Counselor, Counselor Cuddy?
Mr. Best, I want to let you know that you have my full support of the Auburn Civic Band, and I just want to thank you and the Civic Band for your public service, and we obviously, I support you, and I look forward to seeing more of your concerts.
Counselor Camaro?
On behalf of the city, Mr. Best, we'd like to thank you for all the volunteer time that you give to your organization, and especially to musicians that perform. I've heard great things from people at the nursing homes that really enjoy the concerts that you put on. I also will support your efforts, any efforts that we can do at the city, so that you can continue these great performances that you put on for the members of our community. It's very well appreciated, and thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you.
Counselor Zieken?
I too also would like to lend my support. It was a great, great performance you guys did for Memorial Day, and I know you do the holiday parade as well, out here by the parking garage, in the, probably the worst cold days of December, right, I'm sorry, November. It's extremely brutal at that time, and I've seen those playing their weathering out the cold and showing what they're really capable of as far as a performance. I've attended many of these in the past, and again, like I say, it is an excellent performance. These are all, I'm going to say amateur musicians who, in many ways, really put out a professional appearance. So, again, you have my support.
Thank you.
Mr. Best and the band, far be it from me to say I don't like this idea, you know, I'll be rolled out of here on a rail, but everyone in the community really enjoys the concerts, no matter where they may be, at the nursing home, the Hoops Park, downtown here, or whatever. We talk about quality of life here quite often, and this does add to the quality of life here in the City of Auburn, so we do thank you for that. Hopefully, in the near future, we will have a new Showmobile you'll be able to use, but everything in government goes a lot slower than it's projected to be, so, but keep it up, and as long as we're staying as where we were last year, I don't see a problem whatsoever with this, with your request, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for the agreement from last year. It worked.
Public announcements.
The first is, I would just like to point out to the council that next to the cameraman in the back of the room is the equipment that's going to allow us to livestream, and we actually were able to communicate to the Internet today and to the company that hosts the program for us, and it looks like we will be able to livestream the first meeting next week, which will be good because it's the public hearing, and that leads to my first announcement. The City of Auburn City Council notices hereby, given that a public hearing will be held on the 5th day of June 2014 at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers, 1st floor Memorial City Hall, concerning the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. Information regarding the proposed budget may be found on the city's website, auburnnewyork.gov, and any citizens looking for hard copies of those materials may obtain those at the city clerk's office here, 1st floor, City Hall. For everybody that knows, this was the, or everybody that doesn't know yet, we launched a new look to our website just last week, and the city budget page is listed under the Citizen Action Center on the left side there, and this page contains an entire historical archive of all the discussion councils had over the last three months in preparations for the city budget, and you can find videos here, as well as budget documents, as well as last week, the individual presentations that were made by the city councilors are listed on here, as well as the, being able to get to the video segments of this as well. So, any citizens looking for more information on the budget, it's available at the city budget central page of the website. Also, a couple other things, and I'm going to use the website to point out some of these public announcements, is on the front homepage, you'll notice these, we were able to put the city calendar here, and you're able to click on these dates, and next week, on Tuesday, June 3rd, is the monthly planning board meeting that'll be held 6:30 PM here in Council Chambers at Memorial City Hall. The monthly planning board meeting for the month of June. On Wednesday, June 4th, the Human Rights Commission has their monthly meeting. That will be at 5:00 PM at the Westminster Church, 17 William Street here in Auburn. And then, the last thing I did want to point out, and this information is available on the Streamline Recycling page of the website, is this is an announcement we made a few weeks ago, and it's coming up this Saturday, May 31st, the electronics recycling event. It's sponsored by Cornell Cooperative Extension of Kuuga County, the Kuuga County Solid Waste Management Program Office, and the Kuuga County Department of Planning and Economic Development. Citizens may show up between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM at the Bowses Campus on 1879 West Genesee Street Road here in Auburn, this Saturday, May 31st, for free disposal of different electronic equipment. And this poster is listed on our website, and this has been advertised throughout the community, but it is a tremendous opportunity for people to have spare computers, spare TVs, spare light bulbs, things like that, sitting around their house to properly dispose of them, and that is this Saturday morning at the Bowses Campus on West Genesee Street Road. That concludes the announcements.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Selby, city manager's report?
I have a few items, Mayor. The city assessor has completed the revaluation process, and the final numbers are in. The total assessed value of property and buildings in the city grew by almost $100 million to approximately $1.5 billion. This is a positive economic indicator. It's driven in large part by new construction and rehabilitation, some of which we heard about with regard to the historic structures in the city, updating of older properties and just general investment in real property. It also reflects increased prices that buyers are willing to pay for property within the city limits. The total assessed value, 34.64%, is exempt from property tax. That includes government buildings, non-for-profits, churches, and some exemptions that are allowed by the city council for veterans and others. The taxable base is $982,695,869, which is an increase of $44.3 million from the previous year. So, generally, good news. It's not a giant leap, but it's growth, and that's positive. I wanted to follow up with the council, too, on the joint meeting that occurred between the city council and the legislature. I mentioned at the last meeting and had previously distributed a memo for a proposed plan for doing the feasibility study for shared services with the Departments of Public Works in the county and the city, basically soliciting feedback. I know the county is taking that to their Public Works Committee, and we'll discuss it. So, they were anxious to know if we're in, and not really asking for a vote, but just a nod of the head that we should move forward.
I agree.
Do you have any costs that are going to be associated with us moving ahead with that, with studies and things like that? The feasibility study, if we went for a grant, the match amount would be $12,500. As I stated in the memo, if we go for a feasibility grant, it could be up to $25,000, and we, between the city and county, have to contribute $12,500. The problem with going for that grant is we wouldn't know until close to the end of the calendar year whether we got the money, so we wouldn't have a consultant, and we wouldn't be able to move forward. So, the proposal is to use a portion of that matching funds to have a consultant help us develop a framework, and then city staff and county staff will work together to flesh it out. We're going to have to gather the data anyway without a consultant, and at the end, have the consultant do a technical review.
I like that, that idea.
Counselor Zieken, did you say you were in favor of it?
Yes, I'm in favor of that. Is there a chance that we can get to still apply for the grant and perhaps get some level of reimbursement?
For the feasibility study?
Yes.
Not really. If we forego applying for it, there's no way to get it retroactively. What it does do is it sets us up for, basically, this time next year going for about $400,000 in implementation funds.
Okay.
And that implementation program only requires a 10% match from the entities.
Counselor Camaro, did you, anything else that you want to offer?
No.
You in favor of it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
A quick update on potholes. As you recall, we rented a specialized piece of equipment to tackle the many potholes that occurred over this very severe winter season. The plan of that, using that pothole machine, was to tackle the streets that are listed in good condition and fair condition, because those that are listed in failed or poor condition are in the city's road program for complete rehabilitation this year. The roads in failed condition are complete, the roads in poor condition, as far as pothole repairs, are very close to being done. We'll have about another week's worth of use from the machine, during which, if anybody wants to call about a pothole that's in your neighborhood that we might have missed, contact my office, 255-4146, or the Department of Public Works at 253-9554, and we'll try to get to those. To date, we've used 75.2 tons of stone and 174 gallons of emulsifier to fill potholes, so that material's cost is just over $12,000, which is about where we estimated. The lease of the machine was $9,000, I think, as everybody remembers. So, again, contact us as we near the end of the program, we'll be able to go back and catch some of those that may have been missed.
With, over the last three weeks, has there been like a, I guess, there's still, I would say, very successes as to what the potholes look like? Have there been any overtures by the DPW staff to come up with a better formula or approach to the quality of the potholes? Because there's some that are filled, and they look as though I'd hoped they'd look, but then there's others that still suffer the same things that Mayor Quill and Counselor Camaro had mentioned in the past.
What we've learned is that the particular machine we got is kind of hard to control, and I think that's been one issue. It's just as well as getting familiar with this new piece of equipment, which operates with a joystick and a nozzle out front, and I think a little special hand-eye coordination is required to get used to it. We're going to give a full post-project evaluation, probably in two or three weeks, and give you all the costs, all the ups and downsides, look at the productivity issue, because we use one person instead of a crew, and add up all those numbers, and...
Can I make a suggestion? How about for this last week, we get two workers on there, one to like run the joystick and the other to like help guide the chute to the pothole, so that it's like, I mean, it's just a suggestion, but just to like kind of make sure that that play that's in the joystick is a little, is, I guess, supplemented by somebody right there on the pothole, making sure that we get that last week, and those potholes look like a million dollars, so. I mean, that's just my suggestion, but...
Well, Mike Talbot's here, and he and I'll talk, and if we can squeeze somebody out to, you know, help with that, we'll do that.
Doug, I supported trying the pothole fixer, because I thought that a lot of the potholes in the city needed attention, but after seeing it go through the city, I think it's caused a lot of problems in the city. There's a lot of aggregate that's dumped all over the street. It's loose aggregate. I think we need to look at other options, and maybe going back to the old way of having two people on the truck, where you had them filling potholes with a roller, and the old conventional way of doing things, because we're going to new street sweeper coming on, and all this loose aggregate all over the city, I think we're going to have a lot of problems with it, not only filling up catch basins, but it's going to cause a lot of problems with a new sweeper that we have coming up, so I'd like to see us move in a different area if possible.
Counselor Zieken?
Yeah, I too agree. I think we had a limited amount of success with the pothole machine. Understood it, it's, has a learning curve, and it requires a skill set that maybe is better suited for teenagers with video games. Again, I've had numerous people not only stop me when they see me, but call, saying that, in many ways, they thought that the machine's repair was not adequate. Couple fellows that ride bike motorcycles said that they really almost had an accident when they hit the repair. Other people say that the riotability across some of this is still not as good as they would have expected. Again, I think, I think what we need to do is let Mike have a little more autonomy and decide how best to repair these, and maybe let him do the research and come up with either an alternate method, or if he determines that the previous or the legacy method is better, I think we best leave it up to the DPW guys to kind of figure this out. That's their expertise.
We had a sewer overflow situation. Some of you may be aware of it. It was the Friday before last, we had a fairly large storm, and we have an old sewer line that runs from York Street towards the area of Casey Park. It's mostly in a wooded, undeveloped area, but the line had collapsed, and the storm flows caused surges to come out of the manhole of a mix of sewage and stormwater. Tom Gabeck and his crews were mobilized Friday evening. They put a pump in pipelines and pumped around the collapsed part of the sewer as a temporary remedy. Then, we got a contractor on board the early part of the next week. We provided the materials, including the pipe, and replaced about 200... We provided the materials, including the pipe, and replaced about two hundred and twenty feet of pipeline. And now we have a contractor who's about to mobilize to do the cleanup at the Casey Park, where this contaminated wastewater was discharged. What I want to point out is that, looking at the problem that we faced there, that whole line needs to be replaced. We just fixed one segment of it, and Tom is recommending that we replace the whole pipeline. It's an old pipeline, it's got a, what's called a lamp line below the other line, and both of them are carrying wastewater, and one below collapses, the one above collapses on it. So it's a definite problem. So we'll be recommending the council put that in the updated capital improvement program. And just on the parade, I know members of council were there, and it was a great day, a lot of people watching, a lot of people participating, and we'd like, on behalf of all the city staff that helped pull this together, thank everybody that was involved. And I want to give a special thanks to DPW and Auburn Police Department for the street closures, the traffic management, the crowd control. It all turned out really well. And finally, I was hesitant to bring it up, but we're having some issues with plumbers. And just for the public, the city is not endorsing any plumbers, no matter what they may say or whatever documents they may bring forward, but apparently another plumber has attempted to market service replacements, suggesting that the city is somehow endorsing that particular plumber. So again, the city doesn't endorse anybody. We ask everybody to be careful about accepting a plumber's initial assessment, that you need an extensive and expensive repair. You might want to get a second bid if it is an expensive repair, even if you are participating in the city's low-interest loan program. So we're trying to monitor those as those loan applications come in, but we don't monitor anything when a citizen is doing it on their own dollar, so...
Can I make a recommendation? I know that we've been sending letters, but it might be a good idea to send another letter basically stating what you're saying, just so that people know that we are not, we are not, I mean, this happened twice, and in two separate occasions, and that, you know, the first time, you know, it just seemed that there was, you know, a breach of trust, and, you know, the city needs to, I guess, follow up. I mean, I know what we're doing now, but still, it's, I think we need to do one more just to say, you know, please get a second opinion, you know, do, and as far as I, I know that there's a list of plumbers that have, that are on this, I'd like to request the ones that have sent those unsolicited letters be removed, because, you know, again, I think that they've kind of gone beyond, they've, again, solicited based on, you know, assumptions, and I would like to kind of make it right, start to build public trust with the people of Auburn, and send out letters saying that they should get a second opinion, and if possible, you know, talk to, you know, city employees. I know that there was a, there was a constituent that came here in the public to be heard with concerns about the water replacement, and once she got city staff involved, the city workers involved, she was very pleased with the service by the city workers and wrote a letter applauding their service to her and the connecting line that was made. I really think that, you know, that's an example of the DPW and Tom Gayback doing, you know, doing what they're always doing, and that's serving the people. And I guess I want more city presence in these kinds of matters, rather than the private contractors interloping and trying to do our bidding. And that's why I think another letter saying that, please, you know, get a second opinion, or even contact a specific person that can actually help them for this.
And depending on availability of time, I know Tom and our meter replacement guy are always willing to go out and take a look, and they can maybe give some feedback.
That would be, that would be great. I mean, those are the key people that I think need to be on the ground, assuring the people of Auburn that, you know, that Auburn has, the city of Auburn has their best interests at heart, and we're acting upon that. And it just, it just becomes frustrating when we're behind the curve, and these plumbing companies are like really making us look bad, when really it's companies taking advantage of an unfortunate situation, so...
Counselor?
Doug, as you know, we talked about this this afternoon when I met with you, and this is a program that the city has moved forward into, offers zero percent financing to help people with the water lines, and I think we've got to take more of a control of it. And I know you're coming up with some ideas to take that control of this program, and to make sure it's delivered to the city residents fairly and in a proper manner. So your correspondence in the future, well, I'm sure you'll bring it in front of council and let us know how it's working.
Doug, are we allowing licensed plumbers to install the meters?
That's the next step, I think we need to consider, because...
I received a complaint today, and the lady was told she had a leak. She looked at it, there's nothing leaking. She called a licensed plumber here in the city, and it's condensation for them this time of year. So he tried to see if he could get the meter, replace it, take the responsibility for it. So that may help us...
Yeah, it hasn't been allowed yet, but it's on the shortlist of things we need to consider as we try to wrap up the whole program. I might add that, you know, three-quarters of the meters are done, a lot of people have responded that hadn't previously responded, so there's still progress being made, but there's going to be some difficult ones, and we need to get engaged with some creative thinking, how to resolve those. That's all I have.
In regards to the parade the other day, I do thanks to the Department of Public Works, the police department, everyone involved. It was a great day, it was a beautiful day. For Mike Talbot, the only thing I request, Mike, is next time, if you can take half the temperature from the other day and average it out with the holiday parade, so that way we're, it's neither one extreme or the other, and we'll leave that in your lap to work on for this November, so...
Do you want to present two statements?
Okay, all right, thank you. It was a great day, thank you to everyone, hope everyone enjoyed it. Seeker resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Ordinances?
None.
Resolution number ninety-six of two thousand fourteen, adopting a citizen participation plan and residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for the community development block grant program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy of the Second? Counselor Camardo?
Council Resolution number ninety-six of two thousand fourteen, whereas the Sea of Auburn is an entitlement community for the community development block grant program, and whereas the City of Auburn is required to comply with all federal regulations governing residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance and citizen participation as they pertain to the CDBG program, specifically in accordance with Section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four and the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety-one, implementing all regulations at twenty-four CFR Part forty-two and twenty-four CFR nine-one-point-one-oh-five. And whereas the City of Auburn has prepared a citizen participation plan and residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan in accordance with the aforementioned regulations, and whereas the City of Auburn published a notice of the citizen participation plan on April twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, to start a thirty-day local public comment period, and whereas the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, held a public hearing on the citizen participation plan on May eighth, two thousand fourteen, during the public comment period. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, does hereby adopt the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan and citizen participation plan attached herewith and made a part of this resolution.
Discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Council Resolution number ninety-seven of two thousand fourteen, authorizing the City of Auburn to apply for funding under the New York, two thousand fourteen, New York State Department of Transportation Alternatives Program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Resika, seconded by Counselor Camardo?
Council Resolution number ninety-seven of two thousand fourteen, whereas the City of Auburn, New York, has executed a master agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation under the locally administered federal aid projects for road improvements to South Street, New York State Route thirty-four, from Metcalf Drive to the city line, PIN number three-seven-five-three-seven-eight. And whereas the federal passage of the transportation authorization bill, Moving Ahead for Progress in the Twenty-First Century, also known as MAP twenty-one, has negatively impacted the City of Auburn's South Street reconstruction project, and is no longer receiving federal aid transportation funds for pedestrian, cyclist, stormwater, or other right-of-way improvements within the South Street corridor. And whereas the City of Auburn acknowledges the importance of multimodal transportation systems as it relates to the city's goals of community revitalization, strengthening the local economy, and improving the safety and accessibility of the city's rights of way. And whereas the New York State Department of Transportation has released a request for proposals for transportation enhancement and stormwater mitigation funding, for which municipalities are eligible to apply. And whereas the purpose of these funds are to assist New York communities with the construction of on- and off-road pedestrian and bicycle facilities, as well as stormwater mitigation infrastructure. And whereas the City of Auburn intends to submit a funding application for the design and construction of sidewalks, bicycle infrastructure, and environmental stormwater management activities along South Street. And whereas the South Street corridor enhancement project aligns with the Central New York Regional Economic Development Council's five-year strategic plan of two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, priority goals of revitalizing urban cores, main streets, and neighborhoods, and strengthening targeted industry concentrations that leverage unique economic assets. And whereas the South Street corridor enhancement project will consist of design and construction of pedestrian and cyclist amenities and stormwater management activities, which has an anticipated cost of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, with a local match requirement of a minimum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, derived from a variety of sources, including cash and in-kind service contributions. And whereas the City of Auburn does not currently have the funding to pay for one hundred percent of the South Street corridor enhancement project, and it is necessary to obtain New York State and federal funding assistance for the project design, construction, and inspection. Now therefore, be it resolved by the members of the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, as follows. One, that the mayor or appointed designee is the representative authorized to submit a South Street corridor enhancement project application for funding to New York State DOT in an approximate amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in total project cost. And two, that the mayor is also authorized, if awarded, to execute the grant assistance contract, submit project documentations, and otherwise act for the municipality's governing body in all matters related to the project and state assistance. And three, that the city comptroller is authorized to recognize grant revenue, if awarded, and to appropriate the funds into the correct capital account budget. And four, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Discussion? Counselor Cuddy?
I guess this is either for Bill or Jenny. So we're, we have the road program with South Street, and I just want to know how this fits into the work that we're doing now. What's it going to look like? Is it going to look a lot different, or is there any kind of visualizations that have been met, or is this just for, are we voting on the design aspect of it?
This is the, we're doing a repaving program right now from basically Lincoln to Climber Street.
Yes.
This portion is from Climber Street to the South City Line.
Okay.
And tying into the area of Tubman. So in that way, people can now go from our tourist, our hotels and stuff in the center of the city, and go through the South Street corridor all the way right out to the area of Tubman facility, which hopefully someday will be a national park. We have a couple schools there, a lot of the school children now walk out in the road to get to the area of Tubman site, so this will improve the safety of the site and all the rest, yeah.
So this is just going to continue on right out to the area of Tubman?
Right.
Great?
Yep.
Thank you, Bill. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Council Resolution number ninety-eight of two thousand fourteen, authorizing the City of Auburn to apply for funding under the two thousand fourteen New York Main Street program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Resika, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Council Resolution number ninety-eight of two thousand fourteen, whereas the City of Auburn is supportive of the ongoing revitalization efforts occurring within and adjacent to the downtown core, and acknowledges the importance of private investment in the redevelopment of underutilized buildings and sites that would encourage the goals of community revitalization and economic development. And whereas the New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation, Homes and Community Renewal and the Office of Community Renewal, has released a request for proposals for the New York Main Street program funds, for which municipalities are now eligible to apply. And whereas the purpose of these funds is to assist New York communities with their Main Street and downtown revitalization efforts, to stimulate reinvestment in mixed-use Main Street buildings and neighborhoods for the purposes of increased economic development and affordable housing opportunities, which would further the above-mentioned goals. And whereas there are for-profit developers who have conceptual plans for the redevelopment of ten Genesee Street and fourteen Genesee Street, located within the downtown core, who could benefit from the Main Street funding to further their rehabilitation efforts. And whereas the redevelopment of ten Genesee Street and fourteen Genesee Street aligns with the Central New York Regional Economic Development Council's five-year strategic plan of two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, priority goals of revitalizing urban cores, main streets, and neighborhoods, and strengthening targeted industry concentrations that leverage unique economic assets. And whereas this grant would allow for matching funds for the reimbursement of building renovations, for facade renovations, and exterior rehabilitation, that will enhance the residential and commercial conditions within the targeted grant area. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that one, the mayor or appointed designee is the representative authorized to submit a New York Main Street grant application in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation, Homes and Community Renewal, and the Office of Community Renewal. Two, that the mayor is also authorized, if awarded, to execute the grant assistance contract, submit project documentation, and otherwise act for the municipality's governing body in all matters related to the project and state assistance. Three, that the city comptroller is authorized to recognize grant revenue, if awarded, and to appropriate the funds into the correct departmental or capital account budget.
How's it, Camardo?
Who's in charge, is Jenny or Christina? First of all, let me start off by saying that I'm in full support of these two buildings being, going to be renovated. I think they're...
But the point I want to share maybe since I talked about this last year, is I'd like to see us move in more of an area where we're providing these, some of these grants for...
All the, all the commercial properties in downtown Auburn, and try to affect as many properties as we can, because so many times I've heard from individual property owners in the downtown areas, how come it's just targeted to one specific building and not, like we used to do years ago? I think this program used to do it years ago, where it was provided, everybody could apply for a part of the grant, and when the funds were used up, that was the end of the grant program.
So we applied, I believe it was three years ago, to do exactly that in the East Hill area. Our application was denied at that time. The next year, the Downtown Business Improvement District took our application up, tweaked it, submitted it, and they were denied as well. This year, we were approached by this developer with this project, and they, as a group, asked for different ideas for funding for this project. And so we sat with Andrew Fish and some others to do that. They're going in some directions for some other state... They are going in some directions for some other state financing, but Main Street looked like a good option for them. This meeting just happened last week, and the applications are due on June 16th.
So this hasn't been approved by them yet?
No, this would be an application to New York State. They, they have a new piece of the Main Street Program that allows for a single site. This hasn't been allowed before in the Main Street Program. So it's an acre building that would be allowed to participate.
Can I ask why the previous grants were denied when you tried to make it, presented to a lot more properties, other than just one or two?
Part of it was that we had an existing Main Street Grant open, and part of it was just, it wasn't as competitive as other communities in New York State. So we were competing in the arena of a bunch of applications that were submitted.
We didn't have the grant open, we could have maybe...
That was one, one of many factors.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to set that out there, because I think that maybe we could try to move in a area where we could try to let everybody possibly try to apply for these grants as possible.
Right. The other thing for this year is that Quid County Planning is submitting a grant for Weedsport, for Main Street, to do that very thing. And our grant would compete with that grant. And so we were concerned about doing that. And we obtained some help from New York State in determining that this application would not compete with Weedsports.
Thank you. Excuse me, Jenny.
I'm sorry.
Jenny, when are we going to start focusing outside the bounds of downtown? I mean, there's a lot more to Auburn than downtown.
There are. This particular funding source is specifically for downtowns.
Okay, well, is there anything going to be available for, let's say, other areas of the city that, that could definitely benefit from a program similar to this?
There have been several projects that have received funding through the Consolidated Funding Application Process, Carrier Plastics, which is down on the west end of town, Boomer Plastics, which is in the same area, Plaza of the Arts also is in the downtown area, but kind of on the edge of downtown. There are other businesses that, and Seda has not told me which ones, but they are working on two or three CFA applications for businesses in other parts of the city.
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to say, you know, we're, you know, a lot of, I've been hearing this as well, when are we going to start focusing on, on other areas? And definitely, I can think of areas down in, not only the west side, but on the, on the north side, that could definitely benefit from this type of improvements.
The other thing that we're doing is, you all know about our Brownfields Grant, that we've done some Phase One and Phase Two studies of different properties in downtown and, and all parts of the city, mostly owned by the City of Auburn, in an effort to redevelop those, those properties. Right now, we are working on different options for obtaining brownfield cleanup funding. We have a request into HUD for that. And so that, if that's granted, then there would be funding available for sites and buildings, not just in downtown, but some in downtown as well. So we are trying to bring a focus to, obviously, the downtown area, but also other parts of, of the city, and successfully have gotten some funding for that.
It just, to me, there's, there's more to the city than just the downtown area.
I totally agree with you, counselor.
And I think we, we need to do the, the best thing we can to, to, you know, help the city out as a whole, and that...
Absolutely.
I just want to say, I'm also going to support this, and I see that the work that is, that is being done in downtown, and as you mentioned, the Brownfields Grant, Phase One and Phase Two, and the cleanup funding, I think we are working in, in different fronts of trying to create, you know, quality of life for Auburnians that is both inside downtown and in the, and the surrounding neighborhoods. And, you know, I just wish us luck in, in the grant process, so that we can, one by one, or two by two, really revitalize the city.
Very well. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Rizika.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. Counsel, as you recall, Council Resolution Number 99 has been pulled, along with Council Resolution Number 100 of 2014, awarding the South Street Repaving Project to Rizzo Construction. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rizika.
Award Resolution Number 100 of 2014, awarding the South Street Repaving Project to Rizzo Construction. Whereas on March 20th, 2014, the Auburn City Council approved Council Resolution Number 49, authorizing permission to advertise for bids for the South Street Repaving Project, pin number 374458. And whereas this project is included in the New York State Five-Year Capital Plan, and the eligible portion of the project will be reimbursed 80% by Federal Highway Funds, 15% New York State Market Sally Funds, with a local share of 5%. And whereas the project includes the installation of a new water main, the milling and repaving of the road along South Street from Lincoln Street to Metcalf Drive, and will also include sidewalks and curbing, street lighting, and traffic signals as needed. And whereas on May 13th, 2014, bids were open for this project, and the following bids were received. F. Rizzo Construction of Auburn, New York, $3,018,900. Villager Construction Incorporated of Fairport, New York, $3,157,258.70. Barrett Paving of Liverpool, New York, $3,229,000. CGI Companies of Canistota, New York, $3,356,188. And Sealand Contractors Corporation of Rush, New York, $3,474,055. And whereas F. Rizzo Construction Incorporated was the low bidder, in the amount of $3,018,900. And it is necessary for the Auburn City Council to award that low bid, all of which is contingent upon New York State Department of Transportation approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby award the South Street Repaving Project to F. Rizzo Construction Incorporated of Auburn, New York, in the amount of $3,018,900, subject to and contingent upon approval of the New York State Department of Transportation. And be it further resolved that the cost of which, $1,395,425, shall be charged to account number HF8340-440-EW, for waterline work, which is not eligible for reimbursement. And $1,623,475 is to be charged to account number HA5110440-G0, which is eligible for 95% reimbursement.
Discussion, counsel. Counselor Cuddy.
I just, this is somewhat related. Bill, can you come up here for a second? If, if I may ask, and I've been getting this from, from people that I run into and phone calls, and we, we got a group email from counsel, where are we with Franklin Street? And why is it taking so long to see progress on Franklin Street? And I, and the only reason why I say this is that, you know, we're about to award the, the contractor, the lowest bid contractor, and I just want to get, I want the people of Auburn to get a good sense of why it's taking so long for Franklin Street to be repaved.
There's been a lot of progress out there this last past week. If you haven't noticed, they've been boxing out, basically, from high on the hill up near Qugan Beach Avenue, all the way down to Seward. That's, I think, is now, we're just short of Seward Ave. That's all been dug out, and it's, now the stone has been put back in there. And they should probably be paving, maybe as early as next week, in that section with basin binder. Once we see that, you know, people will see a lot more progress. We're going to continue to head easterly through Seward Ave, all the way right over to Marvin Ave with the reconstruction. And then we'll probably drop back and work around that Seamer Street extension near the Burn Dairy Store, over toward Lewis Street. And then afterwards, we will mill it from curb to curb, and, and put in a top course from basically Lewis Street, all the way up to Prospect Street. So I mean, and this is all, it's all been scheduled, and the current thing was, is that we're going to have it all done by the end of July. And we're still, he's a full blast on that project, and we're, you're going to see a lot more progress in the next couple of weeks. It's going good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Camardo.
Bill, let me, let me ask you a question, and I've asked this many a times, and it doesn't seem like it gets built into the contracts, but how long do they have to do Franklin Street?
An average project, when we're into the reconstruct, usually takes about a year, it's like 17, 18 months. This started off not being the, the reconstruct, but we added the reconstruct with council's permission there for that extra $490,000, and we only added about four weeks to the project. It's about seven weeks worth of work, but Rizzo's really banging it in there. It's, usually these projects, usually, this one here started late, was it fall? And it's going to be finished this year. So I mean, this is going, this one's going to be less than a year.
When do they have, supposed to have the street construct?
Originally, it was going to be July, to be July 1st, and now it's the end of July.
And when, so it's going to be the end of July that they're going to be finished?
That's correct.
And that's by our contract with them?
That's, you're right.
So if they don't finish it by the end of the contract, then...
Technically, if there's no different scope changes, or anything extraordinary, then yes, technically, they, you could go after legal, liquidated damages after that date.
And how long do we, are we giving them for this contract on South Street?
South Street, we're, we're shooting to have this done by the middle of July. I think it's July 17th of next year, and we haven't even started yet. So this will...
So what's the timeline look like, though? You got to replace the water line, correct?
Right. And then, and then they'll, they won't do the top course usually probably until next year. And, and so that's, and they'll wrap it up, you know, because we do have that non-construction season where you can't get blacktop in the middle of winter months.
We're going to get into another situation where we had on Franklin Street on South Street, where the road's exposed for months on end without anything happening? It's just stone? Or is it...
Oh, no, no. They're, they're going to do, the way it's scheduled, when we do the water line, they're going to do it in thirds. There'll be a section from Climber Street up to Chapman Ave, another, and then after they, it gets tested, chlorinated, passed by the Quid County Health Department, then they have to go back and box that trench out and put blacktop on it. And as they're doing that blacktop, they will now, the other mainline crew will proceed to go into the second part, from Chapman Ave up to that Chadel Elizabeth Street intersection. And then after that passes, and while they're testing it, they'll start into the third section from the Elizabeth-Chadel up to Lincoln Street. So the water line will be done in three phases, and as they get done with the first phase, move into the second, as soon as it passed, within, I think it's, within 10 days, they have to start the box out and get that all paved again. So I'm, it'll be rough, a little bit rough over the winter time. It'll be a binder on there. It won't be the finished course, but it'll be as good as it is today.
Just so we can tell the folks on Franklin Street, when will the paving start up there?
Well, I, I, within two...
You said two weeks ago.
Definitely within, what do you got? They're, they're boxing it out, and they're got, they'll do the curb work, if there's any, and then they'll probably put the base course asphalt in binder, and then, and then they'll move on to the next section.
When? Couple of weeks, you think?
Well, yeah, within two weeks, you'll see blacktop out there, sure.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm getting calls, just like the rest of the councilors are.
And we also, we're out there today and put some additional blacktop in some of the potholes, especially from around the Marvin Ave intersection, because, you know, even though it's a gravel trench, there seems to be these nasty little holes, and they keep putting gravel in, and it keeps kicking out. So we put 16 tons of blacktop up there today. You know, make it over.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Further discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Rizika.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carrie.
Award Resolution Number 101 of 2014, awarding the Construction Inspection Services and Engineering Support Contract for the South Street Repaving Project. We have a sponsor. Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Award Resolution 101 of 2014, whereas the Agreement Resolution Number 40 of 2012 authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation to proceed with the South Street Repaving Project, pin number 375458. And whereas Award Resolution Number 123 of 2012 awarded the design services for this project to CNS Engineers. And whereas it is necessary to award the Construction Inspection Services for the engineering support of the project to CNS Engineers Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $300,000, and to award additional design services in the amount of $12,466, all contingent upon approval by the New York State Department of Transportation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby award the Construction Inspection Services and Engineering Support portion for the South Street Repaving Project to CNS Engineers Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $300,000, and to award additional design services in the amount of $12,466, all contingent upon approval of the New York State Department of Transportation. And be it further resolved that the total cost of the resolution is $312,466, of which $64,580 is to be charged to account number HF8340440GO, or GO, for inspection of the waterline work, which is not eligible for the reimbursement. And $247,866 is to be charged to account number HA5110440-GO, which is eligible for the 95% reimbursement.
Counselor Camardo.
I'm going to call Bill up again. Bill, it's been a few years, and you know, we've been going around and asking questions. I just, I'd like to have some answers to, we completely reconstructed that street, the street fell apart, the sidewalks are in a horrible mess, the, even the lamp poles are all peeling. It seems like all aspects of this project had problems with it. I know CNS Engineering did the original, they were the original engineers, weren't they, or no?
Yes, they were.
And nobody's here with them tonight, correct?
That's correct.
So what actually happened? I'd like to know what kind of safeguards we, as a community, are going to have to make sure that this doesn't happen again, that all these things, we don't have problems with all these elements of this project. And whether we talk about it's local money, or state money, or federal money, it's all taxpayers' dollars, and I want to make sure that they're going to, they're going to be overseeing, it's their responsibility to oversee this project, and they're going to make some commitments to least us, that they're going to oversee it, so it's done in a satisfactory way, and it's going, you know, the project's going to last a while.
Right.
We started having problems with this a short period of time after it was completed.
And, and like I mentioned before, a lot of that was because of the, the new mandated superpave item that was new, newly developed, and we got stuck using that on the South Street one. And that, that mix was not designed at that time for the, the environment we were putting it in. That was good for southern states with, without the freeze thaw cycles that we have, and high-speed ones with, without cars turning on it, and driveways and all the structures. We were kind of mandated to put that product in. They've reformulated it. Now that mix, that is, the superpave mix is very close to the original mix that we use on all the other streets.
What happened?
It has been, you've got to remember too, counselor, that, that street was back in 1999. So I mean, you know, we do overlay streets like every 10 years. So we, we did get...
That was, if I can remind, remind you, that was a complete, complete reconstruction of that street.
Right.
And we also paid for it to be skimcoated a few years ago.
We did, a couple of years ago. Yes, we did.
And if we had problems with the blacktop, there was also problems with all the sidewalks, majority of the sidewalks. Almost all the poles are all peeling on, on the street.
That was, yeah, you're right. That was another issue.
We've had, there's been a lot of issues there, and I want to hear from somebody from CNS that if we award this $300,000 contract, we're, there's going to be some follow-up on the work that's being conducted there.
Yes. And I mean, it's all mandated by the state, and the state verifies of, you know, the quality of the work we're going to do. And we will definitely do a lot better job.
So I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for one week, and then somebody from CNS is here next week to explain the, the elements of the work that's going to be done, and how it's going to be followed up, and so on and so forth.
Motion to table?
I'll second that. I, I agree that we, we did have some issues there.
Counselor, we, we can't discuss it now, you just have to call for the vote, so. Clerk, if you'll call the roll to table this motion, please.
Motion to table Award Resolution 101 of 2014. Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Since Counselor...
Since Counsel McCormick will be here next week, I'm, I would like to table it as well.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
One week, yes.
Table for one week. Passes.
And Bill, you'll have somebody from CNS here next week, correct?
Yeah, thank, sure. Thanks a lot.
Local laws?
None. Mayor?
Table legislation, other business. I would guess this is Mr. Salby, budget discussion?
And I'll be brief. We're still analyzing all the council input and requests, but I'll give you some highlights. We've confirmed some additional retirements in the fire departments, so we're going to project that we can cut $425,600 from the fire department's proposed budget.
Doug, did you say 425? I'm sorry.
425,600. I'm going to recommend, based on input, that we fund the two vacant police officers, the ones I'd proposed to leave vacant, a cost of about $230,000. Remove the bed tax, not because I believe it's a bad idea, but I believe we're not going to get that revenue this year. We may be spending this coming budget year pursuing the ability to implement that. I don't think it would be appropriate to budget that amount. We are, at this point, looking at Counsel Cuddy's trash proposal, looking at the numbers that come out of that. I know that's going to be ripe for further discussion, but that's what we're doing tentatively. We're removing $92,000 and $78,000 of return on investment administration costs for the refuse program. We're removing $210,000 of health insurance expense because the Health Benefits Committee last Friday voted to approve a modification in the health insurance contract. We were facing some increased costs as a result of the Affordable Care Act. And by changing our plan slightly, we're able to avoid those additional fees with a net cost savings of 210,000. I'll propose to increase the tax levy, stay below the cap, but restore some of the money that was proposed to be cut as part of the original trash fee proposal. Remove the request for the Assistant Police Chief. And just those items, they're big number items, but we incorporate those in the budget, and we have a tentative gap of about $200,000.
Excuse me, Doug. So what's the levy going to be? The tax levy proposed to be?
I need, I need the comptroller to come back and tell you what. It was 1.5% before, but it'll be under the cap. But I need Laura to explain that.
Okay. One thing I do feel that I have a problem with is the request for the Assistant Police Chief. Here we have a department that's done over 14,600 calls to date for service. The cost for the Assistant Chief, I understand, is $1,900. To me, in a budget of $8 million, it's kind of a noise. So given the fact that he's done a great job on a reorganization, and he feels that his organization needs this support, I have to ask and request that we give him that assistant level. Again, I'm in favor of, again, of hiring the two police officers, putting them back on. I do wish we could add one more. I know that there's a definite need for that type of level support. And other than just straight law enforcement, I think we could even add something to Narco with that additional individual. So I would like to see if there's any way we could consider allowing the Assistant Police Chief. I think it would help his organization. He really could use the support. And again, like I said, the service levels, I seem to justify it. He's on track right now to visit just about everybody in the city, and some of them twice by that number. So I think he's got a definite case for that need.
Are you going to get those proposals out to us?
Yeah. Laura should be back tomorrow. I'm going to work with her and try to finalize everything. We've got, most departments, well, I'd say 2/3 of the departments have responded to the line item. So we've got information for you there to explain what those items contain, and hopefully justify some of the costs for you, and get that to you hopefully as soon as we can. I can't promise Friday night, but we'll work diligently on it. So you'll have it, and the public can have it before the hearing. That's what I have.
Very good. Counsel?
I'm just going to speak about one thing that I think there's some confusion on. And there was an article in The Citizen today. And of course, everybody is entitled to their opinion, and I respect their opinion. It says here, it states here, "The city manager spoke critically of a particular proposal from Counsel Camardo. The counselor proposed for the elimination of three department heads, planning, engineering, and municipal utilities, and would have their duties replaced by a new created Assistant City Manager's position." Salby, however, said this would be a broad, pretty broad set of functions to assign to a single individual. My proposal did not assign this to a single individual. My proposal was to split it up, the duties between the manager, the current manager, which I feel very confident the manager has an engineering background, plus he also has very detailed experience in water and sewer. And I thought that between the two individuals, that they could be able to justify overseeing these departments. So I just wanted to set this record straight. It goes on to say, these, I'm sorry, replacing these department heads with an Assistant City Manager that get paid less than the employees they're supervising, in my sense, doesn't seem to work out. Well, I just want to state that, as we did last week, we had a new fire contract. And the new employees are going to be being brought in at a lower scale. That's something we need to look at, not only with the fire department and the other unions, but across the board, starting with our management staff. It's called rate of inflation. I think it's very important that we look at that. We can't start people off just because there's somebody else in the department making certain amount. We need to start them out at a higher rate. We've got to start looking at these areas where we can afford, where we can have some cost savings to the city. Because as I stated last week, oh my, start looking at the structural problems of the budget. We can't, unfortunately, we can't keep raising taxes and fees. People can't afford that. That's an unfair thing to do to our taxpayers, this community. So we really need to start looking at some hard cuts. But I just wanted to make sure that the proper information was getting out, the information that I proposed last week. So I just wanted to clear up those two issues that were mentioned in the paper today. Thank you.
Anything else? We have a request for executive session.
Yes, Your Honor, two matters. One is contractual, and one relates to litigation.
And Mayor, I'd like to update council on collective bargaining negotiations.
If I could just say, the litigation part, I will not be participating in. The other two, I believe, I will be.
Schedule that last.
Okay, good. So if I could just go on the record?
Vote for it, though. I think, I believe you can still vote to go into executive session.
Go on executive session, but I'll be leaving for the litigation part of the...
Understood.
Just a question for, was, John, was your topic, your topics different from Doug's?
Yes.
Yours was for contract?
A contractual matter.
Okay.
Not related to collective bargain.
Okay.
Very well. Entertained a motion at this point, then, for the three items for executive session. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Resika?
Yep. Motion for executive session, sorry, Mayor.
No.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes, but I will be leaving for the litigation part of that. I will not participate.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. We'll be in recess for executive session.